The meeting discussed board meeting of the Ambridge Area School District is held on Wednesday, April 12th, 2023. This meeting is being held to review the agenda for the regular monthly board meeting that will be held on Wednesday, April 19th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. Can everybody please rise to the place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being recorded for business purposes. It may be published in part in entirety on the district website without the express permission of any individuals. Madam Earl, please.
Mr. Carpenter.
Here.
Mr. Seifert.
Here.
Mrs. Fisher.
Here.
Ms. Fitzgo.
Here.
Mr. Keever.
Here.
Mrs. Kehoe.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Zachi.
Here.
Mrs. Ramasco.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. And the sunshine law, please.
The Board of School Directors held an executive session or held executive sessions on Thursday, March 30th, and Wednesday, April 8th, and will return into executive session at the conclusion of this meeting. To discuss personnel matters, matters subject to attorney-client privilege, and other confidentiality laws, litigation, or threatened litigation matters.
Thank you. And is there any correspondence this evening?
No correspondence.
Thank you. Are there any amendments that you've done enough?
There is an amendment, Madam President. We will be adding number eight under Personnel and Salary Schedule and Labor Relations. Number eight will read as follows. It's a Jones Resolution. It is recommended to approve Resolution 2022 to 2023-11, a resolution placing employee number 3035 on unpaid leave effective April 13th, 2023, and authorizing issuance of charges and related notices consistent with the school code.
Is that a motion to add?
It is.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Yes.
All favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We now have our recognition welcoming Mrs. Stephanie Hall, the Highland Elementary Principal that will be starting with us.
Yes, I can't see if she's still here or maybe she's still greeting people. She might still be greeting people in the cafeteria, but we'd like to welcome Ms. Hall to Highland Elementary in the Ambridge Area's district. We're very excited. She brings a wealth of experience both in the classroom and as administrator to the district, and we're very excited to have her to be part of our team and our community and look forward to working with her throughout the rest of this year and for many future years here in Ambridge. So congratulations to her, and we're excited to have her.
Thank you. At this time, district residents may come forward to comment on agenda items only. Each person must state their first and last name and address prior to speaking. Each resident will be allowed three minutes and can speak only once. This period for public comment prior to the standing committee reports will be limited to one half hour. Although not required, board members desired to address questions or concerns may do so after the resident's comments or questions or at the conclusion of the committee reports. There will still be an opportunity for residents to comment on any business relevant to the Ambridge Area School District, old and new business, at the end of the meeting. Is there anybody who wishes to comment on any agenda items this evening? Moving on to legislative action for this meeting, under Personnel and Salary Schedule and Labor Relations, Mr. Seifert and Mrs. Smith.
I'll take this, Madam President. Thank you. Legislative actions for this meeting, Personnel, Salary Schedule, and Labor Relations. All hires pending receipt of satisfactory current clearance and satisfactory drug screening, TV testing responses by current former employers to Act 168 screening, and PDE certifications if applicable. Item one, professional employees. It's recommended to retroactively approve Megan Fistero as the school psychologist, grade K through 12, pending finalization of the MOU with the Ambridge Area Education Association at the salary of $54,761.27, which is a step masters 200 days. As per the terms of the Ambridge Area Education Association, AAPA, PSEA agreement, pending receipt of current clearances satisfactory drug screening, testing, TV testing, and responses by current former employers to Act 168 screening and PDE certifications if applicable. Item two, retirement. It is recommended to approve resignation due to retirement of Charles Price from his position as a health and physical education teacher, effective June 3rd, 2023, with regret. Item three, resignation. It's recommended approve the resignation of Tara Golgram from her position as track assistant coach, effective February 1st, 2023, with regret. Item four, 2223 spring coach, winter spring coach. It's recommended the following individual be ratified to fill the designated winter spring coaching position for the 2223 school year at the salary as per the terms of the collective bargaining agreement, pending receipt of current clearances satisfactory drug screening, TV testing, and responses by current former employers to Act 168 screening provided the school year allows coaches to hold spring sports as normal. Item one, track, Marshall Bruce, assistant coach of two grand, and Carl Ten Davis, assistant coach at 1900. Item two, middle school softball, Darren Smith, assistant coach, 1350. Middle school wrestling, Larry Knott Snyder, assistant coach, 1350. And item five, 2324 fall winter coaching. It's recommended the following individual be ratified to fill the designated fall winter coaching position for the 2324 school year at a salary as per the terms of the collective bargaining agreement, pending receipt of current clearances satisfactory drug screening, TV testing, responses by current former employers to Act 168 screening provided the school year allows coaches to hold spring sports as normal. Item one, cheerleader, Jennifer Phillips, hit coach, 4300. Item two, girls volleyball, Carolyn Humphreys, hit coach, 4300. Boys and girls cross country, Dennis Duncan, hit coach, 4300. Boys golf, Chris Yanessa, hit coach, 4300. Girls golf, Larry Knott Snyder, hit coach, 4300. Item six, girls tennis, Georgia Orlamis, hit coach, 4300. Boys basketball, Janice Ankrum, hit coach, six grand. Girls basketball, Aretha Harris, hit coach, six grand. Wrestling, Larry Knott Snyder, hit coach, 4300. Item six, cafeteria workers, recommended to approve Shelby Mader. Cafeteria worker at Highland Elementary as per the terms of the collective bargaining agreement, pending receipt of current clearances satisfactory drug screening, TV testing, and responses by current former employers to Act 168 screening. Item seven, Jones Resolution, 2223-10. It is recommended approve Resolution 2022, 2023-10 as a resolution placing employee number 602 on unpaid leave effective April 12th, 2023, and authorizing the issuance of or insurance issuance, I'm sorry, of current charges and related notices consistent with the school code. And number eight, Jones's Resolution, thank you, Matt. It is recommended to approve Resolution 2223-11 as a resolution placing employee number 3035 on unpaid leave effective April 13th, 2023, and authorization of the issuance of charges and related notices consistent with the school code.
Thank you, Mr. Seifert. Is that a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any more discussion? Can I enroll, please?
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Seifert.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Fitzgo.
Yes.
Mr. Keever.
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zachi.
Yes.
Mrs. Ramasco.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under committee reports, non-voting agenda items, this is Education and Technology, Mr. Smith and Mr. Zachi.
Happy to take that this evening.
Thank you.
Number one, McGraw-Hill Elementary Social Studies. It will be recommended to approve the adoption of the McGraw-Hill Social Studies Series, Impact, grades they K through five, and the total cost of this series is $57,345. Is there any discussion? Can we get a little bit more information about that?
Sure, yeah. Mr. King, feel free to jump in as well, but what we had looked at is for our elementary Social Studies Series, we have been giving magazines for quite some time, talking with some of the staff, and we're looking for more of a permanent option. So with this, we'll have some other pieces to the series for year one, but then from then on, we will be able to keep both an online part of the series and also an actual textbook for each student in each grade level K to five. This will be something that we will own and we will be able to have that, so this won't be a recurring cause. We found that one couple highlights in addition to covering the material in Social Studies that we know we have to based on the series and the standards that are there. It also does a nice job of offering different level lessons for students. Another word, sometimes in the elementary school day, teachers are really busy between teaching math, reading, science, and social studies, so they offer different lessons that can be 15 minutes, a half an hour, 45 minutes, and they can continue to work through this material depending on the time that they have. I think that was another excellent piece to it. Mr. King, do you want to share anything?
So we have a five-year online subscription and then we have a textbook where the four of them is consumable, and it only costs a little bit more, plus we didn't have, the last series started in grade three and this goes down to grade K, and the department chose really liked it, so decided to go with it.
Was this something we already bought? This is already in the current budget?
This will be, this will be out of next year's budget.
Any other discussion?
Is that permanent solution, so it's not for so many years?
The online, I think, is for five years, correct? But the more permanent, I guess nothing's permanent forever, but the idea is when you own this textbook, it won't be at the end of five years that we would have to buy another textbook, especially when we are one-to-one with vice right now, allowing students to be able to move things up online and be able to supplement them. We'd have to decide at the end of the five years if we needed to continue with the online or if they felt comfortable enough to not have to do that. That would be a decision, but we would own the books.
How many different series were looked at?
It was, at first, we were going to go with the Hot and Methaline series, but they were discontinuing it, so we would have had to put a one-year deal in, you know, to carry the same one, and then this was the other one. You know, most of the book companies kind of bought each other out, and so it's, it's pretty slim on, on the different series you can look at.
And this cost includes the online for five years? There's not a cost that will come in next year? Thank you.
Any other discussion? Number two is a settlement agreement. It is recommended to approve the special education settlement agreement between the district and student number 137759272. It is further recommended to authorize the administration to take all steps in accordance therewith. Number three is also a student discipline, or I'm sorry, is a student discipline, 2022, 2023-17. It is recommended to ratify the discipline agreement for student number 8320031761, relevant to a high school student, effective March 22nd, 2023. Number four is a student discipline, 2022, 2023-18. It is recommended to ratify the discipline agreement for the student number 5545344136, relevant to a high school student, effective March 24th, 2023. Number five is a student discipline, 2022, 2023-19. It is recommended to ratify the discipline agreement for a student number 9253483679, relevant to a middle school student, effective March 29th, 2023. Number six is a student discipline, 2022, 2023-20. It is recommended to adopt the recommendation, the recommended discipline for student number 9769463132 pursuant to a private disciplinary hearing held on March 30th, 2023. Number seven is a service agreement renewal. It is recommended to renew the service agreement with associated occupational therapy for the 2023-24 school year. Any discussion on that one? That'll be all.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Under Finance and Budget and Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Carpenter and Mr. Keever.
All right, number one, monthly district, sorry, school district monthly bills and salaries. It's recommended that the monthly school district bills and district personnel salaries be paid. Number two, cafeteria monthly bills and salaries. It's recommended that the monthly cafeteria bills and personal personnel salaries be paid. Any discussion on those two? Budget transfers. It's recommended to approve the budget transfers for April 2023. Number four, the 2324 Beaver County Career and Technology Center operating budget. It is recommended to approve the 2324 Beaver County Career and Technology Center operating budget for $6,915,699. It is further recommended the board president and board secretary be authorized to execute the BCTC resolution form. Any questions? Number five, Economy Elementary PA system. It is recommended to accept the bid proposal from Horizon Information Systems for a new PA system to be installed at Economy Elementary for a total cost of $20,675 through the state bidding process, which is Co-Stars. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keever. Under Athletics and Public Relations, Mr. Zachi and Ms. Fitzgo.
Just want to congratulate the 2023 River Hall of Water Inductees. First, Dr. Steve Bittman, 72 graduate, current senior director of Integrated Circuit Package Engineering, Falcom Technologies Incorporated. Second, Lorraine Beardo, Justice, PhD, 73 graduate, Dean Emeritus College of Managing Arts and Sciences and Professor, Industrial Design, Rochester Institute of Technology. Fourth, or third, Sean Kennedy, a 91 graduate, Senior Composer and DG Generalist, COSA VFX. And last being Paul Elkobach Jr., 93 graduate, Executive Vice President, Chief Development Officer of the Allegheny County Airport Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Zachi. Under steering and rules of legislative, Mrs. Kehoe and Mrs. Fisher.
Item number one is Policy 830, Data Storage. It is a first reading. It is recommended as a first reading to adopt school board policy 830, data storage for the purpose of secure management of the district's electronic data to ensure the confidentiality, integrity, and availability of the data for all the district users. Is there any questions? Item number two, Policy 011, Principles for Governance and Leadership, is a first reading. It is recommended as a first reading to update school board policy 011, Principles for Governance and Leadership to ensure the language is reflective of current needs and practices. Any questions? Item number three, Policy 200, Enrollment of Students. First reading is recommended as a first reading to adopt school board policy 200, enrollment of students to ensure the enrollment of school aid students eligible to attend district schools in accordance with applicable laws and regulations of board policy and administrative regulations. Any questions? Item number four is Policy 202, Eligibility of Non-Resident Students. First reading, it is recommended as a first reading to update school board policy 202, eligibility of non-resident students to expand requirements for immediate enrollment to include students experiencing foster care and other forms of educational instability. Is there any questions?
Okay, I'll take five, six, and seven. Policy 217, Graduation, first reading. It is recommended as a first reading to update school board policy 217, graduation to include provisions regarding graduation requirements and annual recording of graduation information and debt. A section was also added to the policy to address support for the graduation of students experiencing educational instability. Six, Policy 221, Dress and Grooming, first reading. It was, it is recommended as a first reading to update school board policy 221, dress and grooming to waive penalties related to a delay in student compliance with board policy and school rules for dress and grooming. Due to a student's educational instability, students experiencing homelessness, foster care, and other educational instability has been added to the policy. Number seven, Policy 251, Students Experiencing Homelessness, Foster Care, and Other Educational Instability, first reading. It is recommended as a first reading to update school board policy 251, students experiencing homelessness, foster care, and other educational instability, to ensure that students experiencing education instability graduate in time. Any question? Thank you, that's all I have. Madam President, Ramasco.
Thank you, Mrs. Kehoe, Mrs. Fisher. I do not have anything for this evening. Dr. Presserell.
Just again, I want to welcome Principal Hall to Highland Elementary and thank her for being here tonight. Looking forward to a bright future on that, and also just want to wish all of our student athletes and all of the folks involved in extracurricular activities, the arts, music, an excellent spring season as we continue to wrap up the school year.
Thank you. Solicitor turn call.
Number four, thank you.
Thank you. It is now time for old and new business. Any district resident who desires to comment on any business relevant to the Ambridge Area School District should now come forward. Each person must state their first and last name and address prior to speaking. Each person will be allowed three minutes and can speak only once. This period for public comment prior to the standing committee reports will be limited to one half hour.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Good evening. 44 and Lurin Road. Just had a couple quick questions, just looking at this because I know it's voting next week. You said that you approved budget transfers. It's on the agenda to approve the budget transfers. Does the board have a printout of what those transfers will be? Just for transparency purposes, I think it should say that, that you have, as provided in your packet, just for transparency. The other thing is, where are we with our budget to actual? Are we in the red? Are we in the black? Are we going to have to transfer money from the fund balance to cover this year's budget? Because you just put in here that the Social Studies book is for next year's budget, and I don't know if I missed this or not when you were talking about it, but you said there's a five-year subscription. Is there additional cost for that five-year subscription?
Actually, the five, wait, the five-year subscription came with the entire bundle. It comes with a textbook. So like if you were just going to get the textbook compared to the five-year online option, it would probably be, I think it's like $12,000 or $15,000 more, but the teachers already have an online subscription going back to our last series.
So the total cost?
My thought is, is that when we're integrating all these science standards, science is going to take over, you know, like ELA and math would. So if for some reason, you know, if we didn't want to continue that online portion, then we have a textbook as well compared to consumable, we have no.
So it's a one-time cost of the $57,000, which includes the subscription for the five years?
Yeah.
Not an additional cost?
In the textbook.
But it's not, it's not $57,000 for the next five years?
No, it's just this.
Just the one time?
And we want to make sure that everyone gets their full three minutes, so if you can give your questions.
Yep, yep.
And then we'll make sure that you get all your time.
Yep, yep, yep. So that was my question about the cost, and because you're already talking about next year's budget and what's going in that, but where are we right now? Like, are you pulling money from other places to make these adjustments, or are we operating in the black or are we in the red? And are you going to have to pull that from the fund balance? Because you're not, I mean, with the tax status that we're in right now, it's a little tight, so I'd like to know where all that money is going, coming from, and what that's going to put three years in that.
So just so you know, that's why we were staring, because I just wanted to make sure you got all your questions.
Yeah, that's it, I'm good. Those are my questions, because we're talking about budget, we're talking about budget numbers, and you don't ever really say where we are every month of where we are for our budget to actual, and there's a lot of things and things you can cut, because like driving through here at nine o'clock at night on a Saturday and Sunday, I don't know why this school is lit up like in Fort Knox. Like you can see every single hall light on, every single library ramp light, why? Why do we have that many lights on on a Saturday and Sunday? That's electric, though. Just asking, that's my taxpayer money, you want to know why? That's all.
So to answer your first question, we do get a copy of the budget transfer that I have physically have in front of me, but we get a copy in our, you know, our packet of things for the, for the week. So we do have that, yes. As far as whether we are in the red or the green, or whether we're borrowing from one to the other, there was a budget presentation, can you remind me the date?
12th, March 12th.
March 12th. Would you like to give a little summary of that?
I think your question is about this year, right?
This year. I'm not talking about next year. Where are we right now? Because it always comes up that as we're starting to go, oh, we have to pull money from the fund balance to cover those costs, and the more times you keep borrowing from that, the worse it's putting us, and we're going to go backwards.
Sorry, I thought you meant for next year.
No, no. So, yeah, so where are we right now, this year?
So I'll start with my thing. First of all, I definitely appreciate the question. Couldn't agree more on a lot of what you said. We've got to really make sure that we're only spending on what we absolutely need. It's difficult to say, a lot of times we're transferring things from one account when we came into one or to another to be able to afford this. In general, I'll make this statement, then the business manager can speak. We really have to do our due diligence to try to spend only on what we absolutely need to spend on. It's true for the taxpayer, it's also true because the budget is always tight. So to answer your question, as far as whether or not we're in the black or not, I think that it is looking positive that we should be able to end up overall close to in the black. To determine that for sure, 100% until the audit reports come in and everything comes in, there's still bills that come in, it's difficult to say that. I don't see, there might be an area or two where we're transferring from, but I don't see the overall overarching budget coming in way over the budget. That being said, we know that we've had to use or stake that we were going to use fund balance to balance our budgets, not raise taxes, which is never the goal. Goal should be to try to add to your fund balance, but it's difficult. So to your point, I'll let the business manager share, if she'd like to, share some overarching facts, but I don't think we can get into the exact overall detail. It's too early to project that with other costs that come in. That being said, I respect what you say for sure, glad that you brought it up, and we definitely need to be mindful of all the dollars we're spending and really, really try to watch that so that we don't overspend. Thank you.
And I appreciate that, but in all honesty, when you're doing your financials, you know where you are currently, right now. Are you operating in the red or are you operating in the black?
The audit report that came in last time, which I will speak because that's factual information, brought us in in the black for last year. So this year, to speak to exactly where we are, this is a little larger than you know, than a household checkbook. That being said, do I think that we're all the way in the red? No, I don't. There's costs that could continue to come up. Something can happen tonight that we're going to have to pay for that I didn't know tomorrow, so I have to be careful how I have to answer that. As you know, it's just a very big scale when we're talking about this amount of employees, this amount of buildings in the district, so I can't say for sure we're going to end. But I can tell you this, I feel relatively confident that we are not operating overall in the red, to answer your question.
Before, Ms. like, before you speak, I just want you to note too, we have asked a lot of this, like, over, over the past two years, but in the past month or so, we asked for, the board asked for a ton of reports on where we are right now, not today, but whenever we did ask, which was probably what, two weeks ago or so, and the board has a copy of all of that as far as where we are and, you know, in each line item, so it's a lot, but we're definitely going through it to make sure that we're.
That's, that's the point. I mean, I'm just asking because when you say adjustments, but it doesn't say that you all have it in your packets.
Right.
It's kind of like a gray area, and historically speaking, nine times out of 10, the money's being pooled from other functions that is already allocated to other things that aren't happening in the district that shouldn't be. That has been approved on and has yet to happen. Hence why I asked this question.
Priorities sometimes have to shift based upon certain things that occurred throughout the year, and that's what happened with budget split. To your point, overall, overarching, we need to keep an eye on our finances very closely and only spend on what you absolutely need. I 100% agree with you on that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Lake, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Oh, no, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we got all your other questions. You mentioned the taxes. I know, it's fine.
No, that's okay, I'm listening.
Do we, do you want to speak a little bit on what we've looked at for the, okay.
I mean, I, the district is really aware that a lot of communications have gone out recently through Beaver County, the assessment office, and shared at least on an individual basis with property owners, some previews and some process that goes along with a reassessment. There is a counterbalancing process that happens over on the school district side in the year of the reassessment, and so, and many of you may know this already, but generally speaking, with some limited exceptions, in the year of the reassessment, the school district budget and our, need to be revenue neutral, and so there is an adjustment, a corresponding adjustment in the military. So in order to start to understand what that may look like, now knowing that there's likely going to be many shifts and adjustments as individual property owners engage with that and adjustments as individual property owners engage with that process and seek reductions of, of at least their, their, their previewed, uh, tax assessment, um, we have requested, and the business office has specifically requested aggregate information from the assessors office to see kind of at least as we stand right now, what that number might be. Uh, we would take that information. We have some projections and some equations that we can assist, um, the business office with that have been used in, um, other jet taxing jurisdictions. And so my hope is that in the next month or so, as you approach both budgets and like, and your communications with the public, we can start to understand what that full picture might be. Because, um, you know, a lot of, you know, the, the assessment is one half of the equation. And obviously, the military is the other, um, very important part of the equation that drives an actual tax impact for, uh, for any, for any, uh, property owner, residential or commercial within the district. So we are starting to look at that and trying to gather some information just to share, um, even in the roughest terms, kind of where we think that might be. Um, and, and hopefully to, to, to help property owners to understand what some of the ultimate impacts might look like.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Christina Briola, Ridge Road, Harmony Township. Um, my son's in ninth grade and he's on the track team. He's done track now for two years. And I guess I'm rather concerned about the safety issues regarding roads transit in relation to our track team. They were to ride an activity bus to take our students to the middle school. I'm also proud of myself for sitting in middle school and not junior high, because I've been here long enough to. That junior high just comes off much more naturally. That bus doesn't exist. Instead, the bus, my son's, and I said I live in Ridge Road, in Harmony Township. My son's bus that he takes to and from school, provided that I'm not driving him, is the same bus that they take to track practice. That means they're doing their entire route around Harmony Township with that entire bus full of those kids. Plus, almost two full busloads of track students, of track members. Because those kid, there are two buses of track, uh, team members when we go to matches. There's two buses full. So we're, we're allowing that to happen. Kids get to practice late. That means they have to stay later. The buses are, the kids are sitting on the floor. This is reported from my son. They're sitting three in a seat. He has fallen out of his seat. This is unacceptable. This is unsafe, completely unsafe. I think two, maybe three days of track practice, there was an actual activity bus. There is no longer one. We were late to our first two home meets. We were late. That's unacceptable. There is zero reason that our kids should be late going from the high school to the junior high school. That, that's crazy. The second meet, we had no idea where the bus was, because it just wasn't there. I drove my son and a few other team members to the meet to get them there, because they were going to be late, which is completely ridiculous. This is an ongoing problem with roads. The, they were late, they didn't have a second bus. Central Valley didn't even have school. Rhodes has three school districts. Central Valley didn't even have school. There's no reason that they should have not had a second bus before their track meet last Thursday. With kids waiting, just waiting to be, to be, to go there and then showing up at Black Hawk late. Showing up to our own meet late and having schools being angry with us because we can't get started because our kids are there. I'm talking to parents and I'm finding out that their elementary students are riding three in a bus. And the bus routes are long. That's, this is unacceptable. I do not like roads transit. It is not unknown for many of you who may have heard, my kid was left with another student on a bus by himself while that driver went wherever they went that day. And then they allowed that driver to drive my kid home. That's complete, and he was in fourth, fifth grade? That's completely unacceptable. The company is not doing justice. There, my kid is not safe. The kids that are on the team are not safe. It's unacceptable. And it's my understanding, not only did the track team and the Harmony Township kids ride the bus this week, I'm pretty sure, my son said that there were softball players that were also on that bus going to the junior high. So how many kids do we put on a bus and have that considered to be safe? When is the safety of our kids going to be more important than our contract with Roads Transit? Because this is unacceptable, completely unacceptable.
Thank you.
Christina, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. Kids from our neighborhood are riding the bus that's supposed to be an activity bus or?
No, they're riding their bus. And instead of having an activity bus or taking a bus to Economy Borough?
Like, we always had an activity bus?
Correct. And we're supposed to have one and we pay for one. Rhodes does not provide it. So instead, they, they, and it's usually the last bus that comes. So the kids are even later. So they get the, I can, my life 360 reports that my kid gets to the junior high at like, three thirty, three forty on a regular basis.
And practice, what time does practice start there?
Practice generally starts at three.
Three.
And then you also have the meet that started at three and the kids weren't there till three forty. Twice. And that's completely, and the safety, the safety concerns, those kids get hurt? You're liable. You guys are the ones that are going to be liable when those kids get hurt, because they're not providing this.
The kids are sitting on the floor?
They're sitting on the floor, they're standing up, they're sitting three in a seat. And I'm going to tell you, three high school students should not be sitting three in a seat. There, there's no way.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
So, I mean, if, if they were riding an economy bus, it would make a little bit more sense, which is what I think that they did for cross-country in the fall. But they're riding the Harmony Township bus, which is insane. That's, that's insane. Because it does the entire route through my neighborhood, through Highland, past Highland School, though, past my house, and then down, um, to the Harmony Township, uh, Midstool Middleway. So that, that's a pretty big route. Thank you. Thanks.
So there are several of us that have, have had a similar issue. Um, I can only speak for myself, but I, we are aware of all of that is going on as far as the transportation goes, especially now that we are involving spring sports in the mix. I don't know, Dr. Perez, Briola, do you want to speak a little bit of what you've been doing?
Well, we have, we've had a meeting with Rhodes as early as today. Um, as always, one of the major issues that they're running into, um, this isn't, you know, by choice, the issue that they're running into from Mr. Rhodes himself, Mr. Ho, is they do not have enough drivers. Uh, so they're having to make decisions to try to use the individuals that they have. They are, um, operating within the legal limits, not ideal from their viewpoint either. They would definitely like to have those runs that would be used in a more spread out if they were available. But they're using, utilizing the current staffing that they have. It's something that is an ongoing issue that they're trying to hire and, and battle. And I do understand the concerns. I have met with them and we continue to try to improve upon that. I wish I could sit here and say that there's a one-hundred percent solution to the problem. But I cannot say that from my meeting today that it's going to be fixed tomorrow. We just have to continue to try to improve upon that.
So Rhodes is able to hold up their end of contract when they said that they're going to provide us with the next number of buses and roster arms, correct? Yeah. I would think that we have, we have reached an agreement. And as a taxpayer, that makes it a little easier. That would not get the services okay?
I will say one comment on that. I'm not going to get into the details of that legal matter. But I will say that when, um, there are transportation services not being provided, although that is not the goal of this board or myself or the company, we do not pay the entire cost for that. But that is not our goal or their goal. Our goal is to run it as it was slated to run. But if it doesn't happen that way, not by choice but by force, we do, uh, we have reached an agreement where we do get some reimbursement for that. But again, that's not our goal and it's not their agreement. So that's what I can say about that. The rest of the matter, I believe, will be legal.
Um, hello. Before I start speaking, can I please present some evidence of the bus situation that Ms. Briola was talking about to the board members? Um, good evening and thank you all for your time. My name is Caitlin DeBrochers. I live at 109 Woodbury Road, Baden, PA. I am a sophomore at Amberberry Area High School, as well as a member of our track and field team. And I'd like to call to your attention the unsafe number of students riding bus thirty-two after school. There are consistently students sitting on the floor, sitting three in a seat, sitting only partially in the seat. The bus driver is unable to maintain order within the bus, um, because of how many students there are. This could potentially cause a crash due to herd distraction. As a team, we recognize that during the first few days of practice, the team may have had inadequate transportation due to miscommunications. But after that short period of time, any form of unsafe seating for our team or any child is completely unacceptable. According to the National Association of State Directors of Pupil Transportation Services, an integral part of providing safe transportation in a school bus is that the passengers be properly seated. A person who is either standing or improperly seated in the school bus is not afforded the benefits of the safety protection designed into the vehicle and is in increased jeopardy of injury in the event of a crash or extreme sudden driving maneuver. Generally, the maximum capacity of a bus is known as three proceeds. But, um, Cody and Sean, can you stand up for a second? If you can imagine me, Cody and Sean sitting in a thirty-nine inch bus seat, it's not going to work very well. Um, we must all recognize that the in-use capacity of a school bus varies depending on the size of the pupils transported, quoting Highway Safety Guideline Number Seventeen, Section Two, issued by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. Due to variations in sizes of children of different ages, states and school districts should exercise judgment in deciding how many students are actually transported in a school bus. Generally, this is three smaller elementary school persons or two high school persons into a thirty-nine inch school bus seat. The last quote I would like to make, given my allotted time, is from the Federal Motor Vehicle Safety Standard Number Two Twenty-Two, School Bus Passenger Seating and Crash Protection, which requires that the interior of a large bus provides occupant protection so that children are protected without the need to buckle up. Persons not sitting or sitting partially outside of the school bus seats will not be afforded the occupant protection provided by the school bus seats. Both Amberberry School District and Roads Transit have continued to show a neglectful attitude towards the safety of our students and athletes during transportation, despite administration having seen it through their own eyes. In light of the consistent disorganization at Roads Transit and Amberberry Area School District, I took it upon myself to be proactive and provide you all with solutions to this ongoing issue. Firstly, combine buses running similar routes such as number thirteen and number one. Place the track team on bus one for practices and have them run a backwards route so that our team arrives on time. But lastly, I recommend, recommend dropping the contract with Roads Transit immediately, since similar problems have occurred for years on many buses, as well as with all other school districts that they serve. I also recommend dropping, oh, sorry, I just read that. In closing, I expect a quick resolution, as nobody would want this on their conscience if anything terrible were to happen. In the folders that I handed out to you, there were pictures, as well as text message receipts, of students and coaches complaining back and forth about the bus issues. And you can even see Mr. Carpenter's own daughter sitting on the floor of the bus, um, on her way to practice. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well said. And thank you for taking the time to do that. And that's innovative. She's trying to come up with a solution. Thank you.
Maybe it would be helpful if we talked about what the buses, how many people the buses decide to carry. And what Rhodes has given us in speaking back on, uh, what the buses that were issued of complaint? How many people were on those buses? Can we know that?
I, I guess in speaking semi on behalf of Rhodes, many of their designated limitations, as was spoken by the student members, I believe is around seventy-two, which is three proceed. My belief capacity. As was stated, I understand for the students, professionally spoken, which I appreciate, was that it was difficult to fit all of the students in there, depending on the size of the students. And I, I don't know if I answered your question, but I tried to. The, that, that is the feedback back at this level. The other options that they are considering and that are being put out here, we have some concerns with it. We're willing to do it for game days, but we're leaning towards maybe not moving practices. Getting students out, uh, early, that does happen. It's always happened, um, for games. But getting them out earlier, earlier and earlier is concerning. And for practice as well, it would be also concerning, because you can start to miss quite a bit of educational time. So you have to, I don't know if that's exactly answering the question, but you have to, you know, consider those kind of factors when you're making these decisions as well.
Can we check into those bus numbers that you so eloquently spoke about? Thank you for doing your due diligence and research, but can we look into those bus numbers?
What were they?
Thirteen-one, I believe, is that correct?
Yes. Um, suggestion.
Thirteen-one being combined?
There are multiple buses, uh, very similar routes across paths. But are very formsized and not efficient in any sense.
Thank you for doing that research. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cody Roper, uh, two-six-one-five Connaughton Wells Road. And I am, uh, also on the track team. This is my first year. And the bus problem has been a little demoralizing for me as a student athlete. It is hard to do my best for my, uh, performance on the team when I arrive late and feel that the opposing team will be looking down upon me for not being on their meet on time. And especially for home meets, when it is quite close to the high school, it hurts me a little to know that I won't be there on time. Not only with the track and field team have I been late to events, uh, but the situation with Rhodes has also affected my educational experience. I am in the AP Chemistry class and one of the courses provided by the school takes me and a few other students down to the Pitt campus in Oakland in order to do, uh, chemistry in their lab. And usually, all three times we've gone down there for a lab, we have not had a bus or van arrive on time. And the first and second time, I believe, we did not even know if we would get a bus to take us. And other than our, my teacher, Mrs. Moon Kuzovich, she, uh, would not be able to transport all of us. There is five of us that go down to Pitt. And we, all three times, have been worried that we wouldn't be able to make it there. And it could impact our education at Amberich. And so if this situation with Rhodes could be solved, it would not only improve the, uh, athlete portion, but pursuit of portion of my experience at Amberich. So please consider what we've said tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Sean DuGueye, five-eleven Wilson Avenue. I have three things tonight. But, uh, first is, one of the students that I mentor, his mom has sent me his plan for completion. Right now, this student has zero hope. If you would like to speak after the meeting, I'd be glad to speak in person on that. But right now, this student's mental health is taking a serious hit. And he's a sophomore. He's sixteen years old. He made a mistake in the, the agenda that he was given. He made a mistake in the agenda that he was given. Number six on it is to participate in and satisfactorily attend Warriors Call Boxing Weekly Program sponsored by the Ambridge Police Department. He is being forced to do that by the school. Now, right now, as one of the parents that works with Sergeant Sovich in the program, from ten o'clock to twelve o'clock, is strictly learning how to throw a punch. Other parents have come to me as one of the mentors. Their child has to attend this program also. However, the reason they have to attend this program is because they're fighting in school. The people they're fighting are other participants in the program that aren't being made to go to the program. So essentially, they're bullies going in there, learning how to be a better bully. And the kids don't feel safe. A few weeks ago, Officer Fan and Sergeant Sovich were on PTL talking about the boxing program. And Officer Fan specifically spoke about building trust with these kids. However, on March twentieth, as I've sent the email to all of you, Mr. Cephas, Dr. Pascharella, Ms. Masco, thank you for responding to my email. As part of the mentor program, the program, to my knowledge, is designed to stop the violence, to help build these kids up. When you see two students engaging in a physical altercation, and you tell them to go off a school property and fight, that's not mentoring. And not only that, the students didn't make it off a school property. They made it right out to the edge of the sidewalk and started throwing punches when Officer Fan ran in and tackled the students into the street. By the definition of the law, that is risking or causing a catastrophe because one of the students got bumped into a car. If one of those cars were to swerve, somebody could have been seriously hurt. Now, because of the mistakes I made over twenty years ago, I'm not permitted to come into the school and help mentor the children. But you have active personnel committing, by the definition of the law, felony offenses, but yet there's no prosecution. I did contact CYS. Something needs to change, whether it, because policies do not supersede the law. The law supersedes policy. And by the definition of the law, Mr. Lemenza, Ms. Zupcik, and Officer Fan committed three felonies that day.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. That was your time.
I have one other one.
That is your time for this evening?
But everybody else had plenty of time.
We went over by a minute for everybody. If you'd like to continue, that's fine. I mean, we just went over another minute, so.
My other issue was the Snapchat threat that was sent out. The night before that happened, Ambridge Police Department came to my home because this was said to have come from our son.
So because we've already gone over by a minute, it's, you're...
So we're not going to address a serious issue when it comes to student safety?
You can absolutely address it. I would suggest, whatever it is that you're speaking of, you need to advise that whoever individual that is that is responsible for that.
I did, but I also, when I, I'm taking appropriate course on that. We've already addressed that on that aspect, but my issue is with the school. Because at the last meeting on March eighth, Dr. Pascharella, and I quote, "Every student's safety is your number one priority." I reached out to Sergeant Sovich because my son, because of the threats that were being made, the things that were being said on social media that parents were seeing portraying our son to be a monster with fabricated lies. When I asked that Ambridge or Blassby sent out to maybe address some of those concerns, not only Sergeant Sovich, but Mr. Hurd said that it was a good idea. And Mr. Hurd also did tell me that he didn't appreciate me putting that in my email to you guys. But he ran that up the chain, and my son, he really, he didn't want to go back to school. He did not feel safe. My emails and my phone calls to you, Dr. Pascharella, you sent somebody else to answer.
And those one-on-one interactions with the building level administrator, with law enforcement, those are all directed and they're supports for you, and we will continue to provide those to you. But your time in terms of public comment from the school board, that has been exhausted.
Okay, well, can we get some accountability from the staff then when it comes to the law?
Thank you for your comments. Hi.
Hello. Mary Cala Jenkins, two-twenty-three Dogwood Circle, Baden. First of all, I just wanted to let you guys know, I've watched multiple videos, and there are times when you guys let people speak for fifteen, twenty minutes, and then other times when you cut the queue off at three. It needs to be consistent. Okay? Mr. Pascharella, I wanted to first apologize to you. I was wrong last time I spoke with you. I think I came up and I asked you about incident command systems. And I tried to do my due diligence before I came here. I researched it. I looked up different websites, and I thought I had the right information, and I didn't. And I got it wrong, and I just want to sincerely apologize to you. But I do believe incident command systems and the structure they use for schools is very good. I printed out a document, it's from FEMA, and I, can I share it with you?
You're probably going to hand it to Mary. Yeah, sorry.
So after the lockdown, I don't know if you or Mr. Pascharella, the FEMA, FEMA, the County Emergency Management, anyone, do they contact you guys to do an after-action review?
If you could just get all of your questions on.
It's hard because they're so different, and I need to ask one after. And I'm not going to take a long time today. I promise.
Unfortunately, that's just how, we wanted to make sure you get your full three minutes, and so.
Okay, did you, did someone contact you afterwards? No, because you know what? The other person just asked a multiple questions, the woman about the bus driver, so.
She got all of her questions on at one time, but then head school board members that had further questions.
Guys, you don't do this consistently. It's not consistent. I've watched multiple meetings. I've tracked it. I wrote them down.
A lot of times, board members.
Guys, just let me ask, has anyone contacted you guys?
If you could just get through, we will take all of your questions within that time period.
Did you initiate an after-action review after the lockdown? What are the gaps, if you have initiated an after-action review? What are the gaps between the EOP and what transpired that day? Do you have any staff, this is different, do you have any staff who strive it is in our district to write grants? And I read recently that there was a million-dollar embezzlement about, I don't know, ten years ago, by the Baden tax collector. Did we ever get the money back? Let's see, last thing. I know last time I was here, I asked you guys for the top three reasons for the violence in the school district. I think the school solicitor said that that's off limits, and you guys can't discuss that. What I want to know now is, has anyone on the board asked those questions of Mr. Pascharella since the last board meeting? What are the top three reasons for the violence? What interventions have you put in place before or after, and based on what analysis? Have you guys asked him that? So it's a yes or no. It's not really like a descriptive answer.
So I guess one of my comments would be, a lot of these questions seem to be relevant to Dr. Pascharella, which I think is what you were saying last week. You can, at any time, email Dr. Pascharella any of these questions, and I'm sure he would be happy to.
That's fine, but I would like it on record right now.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to have it here, on here.
Well, yeah, we can answer some of your questions. I'm just saying, at any time, I'm sure you can email and he'd be more than happy to respond.
Sure.
As far as, if you give me a second, I'll look through it. I think you asked if we have a staff member to write grants, is that correct?
Yeah, the first one is actually FEMA, FEMA.
I'm probably going to go back.
Okay.
We have multiple staff members that actually write grants on a regular basis for the district.
Have we ever considered going after emergency funds? Like grants for emergency funding, planning and stuff?
Good, you can speak now.
Okay, so I'll try to answer the majority of your questions to the best of my ability that I can. So you asked, did FEMA or other folks do a job? Basically, as we talked about before, and I'll answer to that if I can, a lot of the safety measures are things that people follow up with in the sessions that are behind the scenes. What I will tell you is, is all the police chiefs, I believe, I can't say that, I could speak to the Ambridge Police Chief for sure, was in contact with myself, and I know that he was in contact with folks from the county. And we did do a little bit of reflection and knee briefing on that. As far as the exact action plan that was developed out of there, every time you have any exercise or you have any, we talk about what could we do to improve. You could always do more, but we do, I don't know if there was a formalized plan that there would be a document to be able to be obtained, but I know that the county at least spoke to our chief in one way or another throughout that time. And then we always debrief, he and I, as to what we can do and how we can do it better. So that, I can answer that. I can't answer that. I thought I was going to answer your question.
I just wanted to clarify, but that's not what I'm asking.
Well, I understand you're not, but I didn't finish either. And so I think what's always fair is we let you, part, let me say this to start about the process.
But I need to clarify my question because you don't understand it.
I'm going to speak for one moment. Please just listen to me for one moment. Anytime that you have a conversation, I have a conversation with somebody, and that's why I encourage the board to do this, what should happen, especially when we're talking about difficult things, is that somebody should have the opportunity to speak. In a board meeting, there are limits to that. Outside of that, there may not. But when I speak with somebody, I like to tell them, please, you finish. When you're done finishing, please let me finish. I think that's always the best, because sometimes if we start cutting each other off, it could be deemed as inappropriate or unprofessional, and I never want to be that. So I may not understand your question completely, but I'm going to go through the rest of the questions that you had and answered. And the board can decide at that given point if we want to take more or not. What I'm saying to you is, I don't know if there's a specific action plan that was rendered after that from FEMA, FEMA, or the actual county. I know that there was feedback provided in discussion between me and chief. What came from the county, I'm unsure. I also know, I would like to reiterate on that, that we've had training from the county in conjunction with the police department this given year on active shooter training, and we're planning additional trainings that we hope to be able to get committed to for fall next year. Those resources are spread throughout the entire county, so you can't get them all exactly where we want them. And we constantly try to debrief and get feedback. That's that. The next thing that you had asked that I have done is, do we have staff that writes grants? So a couple of examples of that as it relates to safety. We recently just were awarded, both Mr. King and some other staff members, Dr. Philip Palsky and some staff members, Foster Crawford out of Technology and some staff members, wrote grants. One is to help support and offset costs for school resource officer that we have. Another is to get technology that we are able to use, for example, for cameras and those types of things, that would be able to give us better footage on these types of items. In addition to that, unrelated to specifically that grant, we had the state police come in, provide us some feedback, and prioritize some things that we need to work on. The state then gave us some dollars that we're going to spend, and a prioritized we were set forth by the state. Some of those dollars will be spent on fencing around playground areas in a couple of elementaries that are not blocked off. Some are going to be spent on additional cameras. Some are going to be spent with regards to mental health, utilizing that position for at least the rest of this year, and one more for guidance council. So we do continuously write grants. When the opportunity presents itself that you could write grants for additional feedback or trainings, we obviously always look into those and try to do that. That was your question on that. The Baden tax collector, I think that was some time ago. I was not present in either one of my positions at that time, so I would not be able to answer that question. What are the top reasons and why was that asked of me, of the violence? What I would say to that is, I think we talked quite a bit in detail about some plans, and are there exact answers in a safe spot in executive session when it deals with student safety? The board had a series of questions, want to know some next steps. I shared some things that I said, I think, before, where we can make some improvements, but I can't guarantee, as I said, even though safety is my priority, and I will repeat that, we have to continue to try to improve upon that safety. But I don't have, or anyone else doesn't have, a specific answer. As far as just top three reasons, no, I didn't get a specific. I will show that to list exactly what the top three reasons were. I list a variety of reasons that seem to be concerning, and what were eight dollars, and also professionals that we're using to try to work around that to the best of our ability to improve upon the safety. I think those were your questions. I don't know if the solicitor would want to or is allowed to speak about the tax collector, but I'm unfamiliar with that.
My understanding on the tax collector is that individuals served, and that's why I was, I wasn't inserting the internet, I was just double checking that I recall this somewhat correctly. Our tax collector served three years approximately in federal, in prison, and then was ordered to repay both Baden Borough and the school district as a matter of criminal restitution. But that order, the order for restitution spells out how much the individual has to repay, and I'm going to guess, because of the amount that it's likely, probably for the rest of the individual's life, will there be tiny little payments? Those payments go to the court first, and then the court distributes them to the district. So I would have to check to see if, it's also dependent on whether that individual is actually employed. If not employed, then that will not likely, like happen. But that was, there was a duty pension that derives the restitution.
Thank you both for that. And my suggestion would be, at this point, maybe there's a meeting that...
My question wasn't answered. There was a misunderstanding? Look, I, I have no, anything in this. I'm sending my daughter to private school, right? She's going to Ellis Harbor, like, or Shady Snyder Swiftly. I care about this. I want to make it better. I'm not doing this to embarrass you or put you on the spot. Okay, I worked at the Center for Public Health Recovery. I was hired by a former national security advisor to President Bush Senior, who dealt with the catastrophic plants for the United States.
So I think if you have suggestions, I mean, everybody's...
Yeah, I'm asking you the emergency operation plan, look at it.
So this is, yeah, this is not the forum to go back and forth, though, unfortunately, because there are a lot of other people in the audience, so please, yes, there are.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak?
Yes.
So at any point, you can request a meeting.
Okay, I will. Thank you.
And just as a point of iteration to everyone who's here, the, what might appear as a reluctance to answer questions oftentimes is framed because this is not the best forum or we want to be able to provide thoughtful answers. So very specific questions about response, I mean, that's the one that stood out to me, was that response time, so the gap, specific gaps in time. I heard that, I noted that, I'm sure that others did as well, including the administration. But those are things that are very difficult, like on the fly, to give accurate thoughtful responses to. And so we, and we want to make sure that whatever response we give is accurate and thoughtful, and sometimes that's just difficult.
I just wanted to know if you guys looked at the plan, and then you looked at that actually happened, and that they line up?
Understood. Thank you.
I'd like to add one thing. I do have a child in the district, and I have one that just graduated last year. So safety is very important to me for my child, as well as everybody else that's in the room. Those discussions have been exhausted in the almost two years that this new board has been here, and I'm sure they've been on for many years with some of the people that have been here before us. have been here before us. But I'm very passionate about the fact that any mitigating, and this is just my opinion, I do not speak for them, but anything that we're doing from a defensive or mitigation perspective to protect our kids, I would certainly not want to project in public. Because those same people out there that are looking to perpetrate are looking for that information too.
I don't want to know the gap.
So, just because you don't see it, don't think it doesn't happen. Because we, the reason we're here is not for no money or fame. We're here, somebody promised me that, but it hasn't happened yet, but we're here because of many of the concerns that you relayed, we have it due for our own vested interest of reasons. So, I would just say, as things progress on the front of further defining what we're doing in response, my opinion would be that we hold that and that we don't protect that because we don't want to protect that to the wrong people. FEMA says-
No, I understand that, I'm not asking for specifics, I'm just asking-
No, I know, but I-
Did you look at the operation plan and did you look at every school's role, like the response? Did they do what they were supposed to do in the moment? I was at the school that day. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nina Bruna, 212 Maplewood Avenue, Ambridge, PA. As a student athlete, the bus situation is very unsafe. I've experienced this with two other sports, cross-country and bowling. We've had to combine buses and having mostly busloads in elementary, Catholic school, track team, softball team, high school bu, on the high school bus, thirty-two, on one bus is very not acceptable. Having kids on the floor can cause athletes' performances to download because they're worried about getting hurt on the way to practice and meets. Um. Wait. Yeah, on the way of getting hurt to practice because they're going late, they can't warm up properly to meet and this, the performance is slowing down because they can't get to practice on time, they have to stay later so they could ruin other sports that they have after or activities they have after practice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Miss Interim, can you repeat your name, please? Miss, can you repeat your name?
Okay, okay, thank you.
Hi guys, I'm Shawn Anderson, I'm a senior. I've done track for four years. The bus is extremely important. That is the whole reason I was able to do these sports. For the first three years, I wasn't, that was vital for me to get there. There was no other reason, but this is the only way I could get there. And I've seen what's happening on those buses. It's comical, like, you walk in there, there's three in the seat, there's people on the floors, you ask your friend where to sit, they go, sit on me, that's, it's, what happens? I'm laying on them, it's bad. And half of our seniors, half of the students that can drive are driving students there. So, I'm just saying that the bus is vital and thank you for listening to me, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Fabiola Gergrich, twenty-six, twenty-three, Woodland Road, Harmony Township. My daughter, of course, is on track too, but she doesn't take the bus, fortunately for her, on the state home walk, so I can take her, even though I keep her late to what you guys are experiencing, because, hi, I'm Katadina's mom, yes. But again, as Dr. Pascherel said, Rhodes is having an issue with employment, so even if we got rid of Rhodes, who would you hire? Would you think another company's not having an issue? Because they are.
ABC Transit, I can assure you that they're on my deal.
Are they? Well, did you present that to the board?
I will be happy to.
Okay. So that's one. Someone had asked about the more of the violence that's gone on. My husband was a former public school teacher for many years, eleven years, so I'm going to tell you, these are my thoughts and his thoughts, not the board's thoughts. The problem is the moral breakdown of this country, the lack of family unit and your phones. Those are what's causing the violence in this country. So that's me, not them. But anyways, moving on, these are my questions for tonight. Number two in the settlement agreement, are you able to elaborate on this? Number seven, on the service agreement renewal with the occupational therapist, is that a standard process for public schools? And if so, what kind of service does this occupational therapist do? So, I mean, I understand what an occupational therapist does, don't get me wrong, I just don't understand it in a school system and why it's there. Then, number four, that six million dollars for the technology center operating budget, again, where does this money come from? Is it coming from that millage, from the assessment taxes? Where is that money coming from or do you have a grant for that? It's nice that you folks are honoring these inductees for someone like me who does know these individuals, it'd kind of be nice to say what their accomplishments were, what their goals were when they were here at Ambridge. And I think that is it. Thank you.
So I'll just speak real quick to your, to about the inductees. They will actually have a nice five-hundred-word essay type of thing on the website and then also we recognize their graduation with a shorter speech about them. So we just wanted to, at this school reunion meeting, yeah, and pictures will be on the website as well, so, and you can actually go on if you want, I don't know if you've ever been on there, but there's Hall of Honor inductees from, anybody remember the first year? It's been quite a while.
Eleven, ten or eleven?
Maybe two thousand and ten. So there's inductees from each year, so if you want to take a look at it, but those ones will get added when they're as well. And then if you, when you leave today, if you look out on the wall as you're leaving on the left, a lot of them are in there as well.
Okay. Yeah, I'll try to, would you like?
No, I don't have.
So, one, dealing with an agreement, we wouldn't be able to share any more details about agreement, I don't think.
It relates to a special education matter, that is not as far as-
OT, yes, yes, that is something that's typical in all public schools that I, I've been a part of. There are services that need to be provided to students and that's often contracted out because many districts have speech therapists as we do that we hire because there's the relative need that requires you to have enough for one, two, three employees or that. However, for OT, it might be, it fluctuates and there's not as much of these folks coming to provide those types of services to schools as to, as we have a contract. The CTC is the overall budget, that's not the exact amount we owe. We owe a portion that they figure out based upon the number of students that we send there and then we pay our portion. We are one of the largest sending school districts in the CTC, so accordingly based upon that, we will pay more than other schools who send less, but this is adopting the overall budget and then we pay our share based upon the average number of students compared to everybody else in that answer. And we believe in that program, we're happy to have a lot of our students attend.
And that's something we budget for each year along with the LEU budget as well.
Yes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jamie DeRochers, I live at one oh nine Woodbury Road. I will not be speaking as eloquently as my daughter did earlier. I am the education director at the Watson Institute and I serve as many of the students here, I have the opportunity to work with Amy on a daily basis. And with that, we serve over thirty districts and all of them are bussed in regularly. I can assure you that I have no issues with ride transportation, I have no issues with ABC Transit, I have no issues with Monarch. The districts that have Rhodes Transit have been a nightmare since the beginning of the year. For example, Alquipa today, our dismissal time's two forty-five, Alquipa sent their bus, which was a Rhodes bus, at four fifty to pick up special needs students. So it really is Rhodes Transit that is the biggest issue. I'm sure that they have, that everybody's dealing with a crisis with hiring employees, but for some reason ABC Transit, Monarch and ride transportation have figured it out and Rhodes still hasn't, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, board members. My name is Felicia Meisig, I'm the coach for track and field team and first I wanted to just say, I'm quite impressed with these kids. They are coming to practice frustrated and mental health is very important for these kids. So I worry about them because track and field is a very mental sport. I would say probably eighty to ninety percent of it is mental. For them to come to a meet late, you're causing, it's causing anxiety, not you, but I understand you guys are going through a lot, I know Rhodes is going through things, I know the planet, the whole world. And just to redirect, I really appreciated you coming up and allowing us to, at first thank you for letting me coach your daughter, first and foremost, I think she's amazing, young lady. But I just wanted to redirect, because these young students definitely were coming up here to voice their concern for their safety versus getting told like where the problems came from. So just, their thing is their concern is their safety, as far as around lunchiness, one of the bikes, when you put so many students in a position like that, you're putting them in uncomfortable situations and some of them are going to react different ways, whether it's from their cellphone, whether it's from the parent house or anything like that. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, because it was, thank you for clarifying that, because these are my kids, that one tingly sense came up, I was like, oh, gotta come up. So, but yeah, I wanted just to make sure that we were all on the same page, that they are concerned about all of that. And when they come to practice, I'm the one who asks to redirect them, reframe and focus, re-energize, and I just need you guys to help me out. It is very difficult to have total on the team, we have over a hundred kids that we're dealing with, from seventh grade to twelfth grade at one period, one time. They'll get out of school here and they'll sit outside and wait and they'll send me messages saying, coach, our bus is not here. So they're out of school, they're not in class and they're sitting and then dismissal happens and they're still waiting for their bus. So I don't know if you want that image in your head, but in my mind, I'm like, oh my goodness, we have a track meet and why are our kids standing outside waiting for our bus just to bring them to there and we have all these other schools that showed up on time? We asked them to come a little early because we're throwing the discus in the middle of the field, it's a little difficult, so if you can just, you know, I, I'm quite impressed with them. And none of this was from me. We have, and I wish Alvin was here, because he comes in and he's a, he's one of our, is that a timer to tell people to stop talking? I was curious. All right, so I'll respect your time, but I'll just say that they are truly late. They're frustrated and now we're adjusting our times. I'm not able to get a hundred students prepared for a meet properly in the time that you're giving me. I have to deal with weather issues, I have to deal with some other grades, so many things are going on. Buses should not be something that they should be concerned with at this age. They should be focusing on schoolwork, getting the exercise in and dominating at their sport. But you guys are giving them a problem that I know you're addressing, but it's now to avoid that. It's completely unfair to the coaching staff, to visiting schools, to the athletes, to the volunteers and their parents, to every, I mean, I can just keep going. So, but thank you for listening to them and thank you for this time and thank you for clarifying that.
Can I ask?
Yes.
Can I ask, out of those hundred students, are they all from the high, because I know you have middle school-
No.
Are all hundreds from the high schools?
No, they're from seventh grade to twelfth grade.
Okay, so how many, do you have a process number, how many?
I'm outside, we have the high schools, so, yeah, so I know Ms. Gergel mentioned how we did two buses and we had one bus here. I, you know, made sure I verified, I read, I sent emails, I was trying to verify, hey, yes, but I need two buses. I made sure, I did multiple things and then we have no bus, we have one bus. And then the ladies gets on the CV and calls and says, hey, I can't, this is all you're getting. I said, well, I'm going to put them all on the bus then and you tell me if this is going to be good enough. So we put all the kids on the bus and then she decided to call for a second bus. Like I had to physically get onto the bus and ask, put every kid on that bus to show that this is not acceptable for us to go to our meet.
And would you go to a lead middle school baseball travel together?
No.
Okay.
There are two different meets, two different, so we have our seventh, eighth grade team, they travel and then our high school team travels separately.
Okay.
So for our section meets, we do two buses and for our, like when we have varsity meets, we usually take only one. Our, yeah, varsity invitationals, we take one.
Thank you.
This is Ramasco, I just wanted to comment. Somebody brought up about the Beaver County Career and Technology Center budget. It is roughly six point nine million dollars and for those of you that don't know, the history of the CTC is about fifty years ago, the fifteen districts in Beaver County came together and created the CTC. So technically, which we're down to fourteen school districts now since the Center, Monaca merger, but every school district in the county owns the CTC. The CTC does not have any taxing authority. So how the budget is created is it takes into consideration all the salaries, the supplies, the technology, contracted services, Bevers, Social Security, all of that. And then it is divided up between the number of students that attend the CTC and this year currently, it's about seven hundred students. So you pay based upon your per pupil price by the number of students you send to the CTC. Ambridge is the largest school district in Beaver County, we also send the most students to the CTC, but we have seventeen programs at the CTC, but those are programs that you would not be able to afford to provide in your own school district. So, that's why there was the creation of the CTC. The CTC is currently forty-seven years old. So like I said, we don't have any taxing authority, the money for the budget comes strictly from the number of students that attend the CTC. So I hope that answers some of your questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Beam. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the board this evening? Okay, so I have a motion to adjourn to executive session, so, if I have a second. Um, favor?
Aye.
All those? Thank you for coming out. Good night.